Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting, June 14, 2011. I'd like to thank the San Bruno Garden Club for the lovely floral arrangement they always provide for us. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
And Councilwoman O'Connell and Councilmember Iber are excused this evening with cars. So, let me see. Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Heck, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The only announcement, though, I'm sorry. I mentioned the flowers, but I'll mention the flowers again. Thank you to the garden club.
Yeah. I checked it off.
Just a quick announcement, and you probably all know already, but we had the pleasure of hosting a visit from the chairwoman of the National Transportation Safety Board last week, and was very interesting, very informative. She met with the council, she met with the city staff, she met with residents, and actually visited the site. After that, she was taken by PG&E to a couple of areas where they're actually doing some pipeline testing. So, very informative and very interesting, and we look forward to their final report, which is tentatively scheduled for the end of August. Presentations? We don't have any presentations this evening. Review of the agenda. I would like to take item 11, which is the receive the annual report from the Planning Commission, move that to right after public hearings, item 8. Any other changes on the agenda? All right. Approval of the minutes: City Council Meeting, May 24, 2011, and City Council Close Session of May 24, 2011. Errors, changes, submissions? Carol?
On a change in the agenda, item 10G. The removal of item 10, to move 10G.
Thank you very much for reminding me. 10G will be removed, and we'll review it at a future meeting. Okay. Anything else? All right. Seeing none, they will be approved as submitted. Consent calendar: All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Anyone like to address the consent calendar?
Through the chair.
Mr. Medina?
Move to remove item 7C.
Remove item 7C. Balance of the consent agenda?
If there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and move to approve.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
7C: Adopt a resolution amending the salary plan for unclassified part-time temporary and seasonal employee classifications. Mr. Medina?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quickly, my understanding is that these are compared to neighboring cities for what they're being offered here before us. One just quick thing is under bus driver on the old rate effective April 1 of '08. It had a top step of 21, 22. On the new proposed, it has a top rate of 12, 68. So, obviously, I just think it just didn't get carried over correctly. So, I'd like to make that correction if that's possible, and if there's no other comment or commentary, I'd go ahead and move to approve.
Second? Motion to approve with the changes submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item 8: Public hearings. Notices have been published, posted, and mailed. First public hearing is 8A. Hold a public hearing, adopt a resolution approving a six-month extension of planned development permit 0502, allowing for the development of 510 new residential units, and adopt a resolution approving a six-month extension of planned development permit 1001 and architectural review permit 1006, which allows the 308 apartment units renovation project per Chapter 12 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff?
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This is the latest installment and the treetops reviews that you have done over the past five or so years. And before I begin my presentation, all of this is done under the backdrop of the strong city council direction to hear the neighborhood concern that this vacant apartment building has been within the neighborhood for years now and has had a negative effect on the surrounding area. So, throughout this process, the city council has really given a strong direction to, A, make sure that this building gets constructed as quickly as possible, and B, while it's vacant, make sure that it's maintained in the best possible manner. So, with that, a brief background on the approval process. Everyone's familiar with it. In 2005, Aimco vacated the 308 units that are existing there. In 2006, 2005, 2006, they got their first approval to build a new 510-unit apartment building in the same location. Two years later, they came back and got city council approval once again to do the same 510 units, but with a slightly different site design as well as architectural design. The first materials that they proposed were too expensive. This once again did not move forward, and last year, the applicant came to the city council again and requested an amended application. And this application was different in that it had two different options to it. Option A was to move forward once again with that 510-unit apartment building, and option B was to simply renovate that existing 308 units. Couple important, there are a lot of conditions, but some of the more important conditions were, A, both of those projects had to be accomplished, or construction on both of those projects had to be accomplished within a one-year period. So, June 22 was the date for the renovation project to begin construction. And B, there was a number of maintenance requirements for the existing buildings as well. Well, since that time, the applicant has informed us that they are going to move forward with the renovation project. That's the project they're focused on now. They have been up to, they have been working on this project. They were, they've got their building, their building plans approved over the last year, and they've also got their improvement plans approved. Neighbors may have noticed, and the council may have noticed, they started the grading work on the corner parcel, cutting it flat so that, removing some contaminated dirt that was there from an old gas station, and cutting it flat so that the new recreation building could go there. And they've also started a HUD application process for HUD-backed mortgage insurance. There just aren't private insurers of mortgage right now that will insure a loan for 308 units renovation, so they're going the HUD route. Now, obviously, when you go the HUD route, it takes a little bit longer, so that's why we're before you here tonight. So, this was per the applicant's request, and as the notice says, they're requesting a six-month extension to all of their entitlements. So, this would require that they begin construction by around Christmas time, December 22. However, the applicant's timeline puts construction of the renovation project to begin construction in the October timeframe. There in the certain legal term, it's called the firm process right now for the HUD application process, it's, you could relate it to like a longer escrow period that lasts between 90 and 100 days, and it began a few weeks ago. So, that puts them in the end of September for the end of the HUD application process. And after that, they will have the money necessary in order to pull permits, hire their contractor, and to begin construction. The neighborhood will be kept aware of everything that's going on. One of the previous requirements was that they have a pre-construction meeting and invite everyone within the neighborhood there so that the neighborhood can meet the contractor, get his or her phone number, so they'll know who to contact when problems arise on the site during the construction process. Part of this approval, Aimco had requested that some of the major maintenance responsibilities, like boarding up the windows or removing the porches if necessary, that that be extended also along with this. Staff has prepared this resolution, not agreeing with that, and saying that these conditions should be implemented at the city's discretion. One final note, there was an improvement agreement entered into between the city and the developer. There's also an extension request on that improvement agreement, and the developer has also agreed to give the city a letter of credit necessary to make the improvements to the street in the case that the developer goes away. So, with that, I could take any questions from the city council.
Any questions? Michael?
Aaron, I'm curious why, if we're, if we know that they are going to go with the renovation project, why are we extending both?
That's a good question. The developer asked that both be extended. It's the way they're, the way the resolution and the ordinance is written is that once they pull the building permit on one, the other entitlement goes away. So, I think what they want to do is, they just want to keep all options open from a legal standpoint, but in reality, they are moving forward, and they have the HUD insurance as well as the mortgage necessary to only do the renovation project.
Okay.
That might be a question you might want to direct at the applicant as well.
Okay. Any other questions? See, the applicant is here. Would you like to say some, something?
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Sean Finnegan with Aimco, and I want to thank staff for working with us for the past couple of years, myself in particular, and getting this project to where it's at. We're excited. We continue to be excited. We have been in touch with HUD as recently as last week, and I wanted to give the council sort of an update on where our loan is at, because I know we're in front of you asking for a six-month extension. They have approximately 30 loans on their plate right now. We're number eight, which is a very good spot to be in. They feel that there's a few ahead of us that are not as well-prepared in terms of their applications that'll probably drop down or drop out completely. So, that's really good news. We're exactly where we want to be, which puts us in the same timeframe of September, October for construction start date. Now, unfortunately, this is not a bank. It's HUD, and it's a HUD process. So, in order to give an exact closing date is, they just don't give those exact closing dates. If we were going to a bank requesting a certain closing date, we'd have a more exact date. So, therefore, that's kind of why we're asking for a six-month extension to give us, to make sure that we can get in with that timeframe. If there was any other questions, I, like I said, I thank staff, and I look forward to the project moving forward, and we're doing everything we can to speed up the process, and so is our sponsor, Red Capital.
Good. Are you doing any work up there now at all?
Other than the corner parcel grading, we're finishing that up, and I have our vice president in construction here. If there's any questions on that, we can answer that, but that was something we needed to start ahead of time in order to prepare that corner parcel, because it did have some contamination that HUD needed to have out of the way before they insure the rest of the project.
All right. Any other questions of the developer?
No, right now.
All right. At this point in time, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the public, anyone in the public like to speak on this issue? I remind you that if we close the public hearing, you're concluded from discussing this with us again.
Move to close the public hearing. Second?
Motion second. On the question, go ahead.
I'm hearing about, I live on Summit.
Excuse me. Pull the microphone down and tell us who you are and your street address, please. Thank you.
I'm Julie Rosovich. I live on Summit Street. Now, I'm trying to understand this process. We have two permits, but as residentials, we don't know what is going to happen. Are they going for 300 units? Are they going to go for the 500 units? No one is keeping us informed of that part. I understand from the meeting that there's those two permits. Which is the plan that they want to go with at this point? Okay? That's one question. The other question is, these apartments have been sitting there collecting how much more mold from sitting there when they were originally closed off because of the mold? What is going to happen in construction to make sure that this stuff isn't airborne for the residents? That's one, another question. Another question is, okay, we have the letter saying that the street is going to be blocked off. I understand that. Can we put some signs going down Elston so you don't make the right into the Sharp Park access and go, "Oh, it's closed off in the morning"? Can we make a sign kind of making it a little more visible? And there's been times where the traffic is not being filtered through very well. It's kind of been a roadblock coming up Sharp Park. So, I think there needs to be a little more traffic control in the busier hours on Sharp Park when people are coming through Sharp Park down Westboro. Those are my three things.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Developer, planning?
I think I'll be able to speak to all of these. It is a little bit confusing, because they usually don't approve two of the same entitlements, but right now, the developer has committed to the 308-unit renovation project. So, they will be renovating the 308 units that are there right now and not moving forward or construct. They don't have the financing in order to construct the 500 units. On the second point, we have been in contact with County Health about the potential for airborne mold particles. They did not have any concern when we last spoke to them, but we'll make sure to involve them. They need to, Bay Area Air Quality Management District needs to approve the demolition permit, and County Environmental Health will also be involved for both of those for making sure that there is no airborne contamination, both on the asbestos level and on the mold level. Regarding street detour signs, I think that's a great idea. I understand what you're saying. People can make the right there and kind of get, not be able to turn around easily. So, yeah, that's a, that's a good idea to put something there and detour them to Pacific Heights and then onto Sharp Park.
Okay. Anything to add? Okay. Any other questions? Comments from the public? We do have a motion, a second on the floor, and a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I guess we should adopt the resolutions formally, is that right? And we'll do them separately? Okay.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Just, I think you had a very good suggestion. I was up there this morning driving through, and I didn't realize that it, how often it is used by traffic commuting through the property and adjacent. So, I think that's an excellent idea. Thank you for bringing that up. I think, as the developer said, they're looking forward to moving forward, and I can only tell you, I am sure the neighborhood and surrounding areas are beyond even that. It has probably been an eyesore and something not too enjoyable to look at in the morning, and I'm hoping with this extension that we'll be able to actually see progress more than just at the corner, which is a start, and so it's a beginning. So, I'm anxious and excited and hopeful that we'll see something monumental happening this year.
Good. Would you like to introduce the resolutions separately?
Would you like me to?
Yeah. Please.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the resolution approving a six-month extension of the planned development permit 0502, which allows for the development of the 510 new residential units. Want to keep going, Carol?
Did you say 510?
Yes.
That's the first one.
That's the first one.
Okay. Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
I'll go ahead and move for adoption of the resolution approving a six-month extension of planned development permit 10-01, and architectural review permit 10-06, which allows the 308 apartment unit renovation project.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Item 10, let me see, 8B is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule for 2011, 2012, establishing fees for municipal services.
Mr. Mayor, if I could go back for a moment to the last item and just clarify, it appears as if the agenda captures the item differently than the actual resolution captures the item. And in fact, there is one resolution, and that resolution is titled Approving First Amendment to Public Improvements Agreement and Extending Timeline of Amended Development Plan for the Pacific Bay Vista's Project. That resolution captures the extension of both of the items, both projects, both previous approvals. I believe that we can take the council's action as understood to have captured this resolution. Or would you like them to do it again?
Motion taken, and hopefully, second will, yes, that, just what the city manager said, that's what we approved, that's what we meant to say, and go forth.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, we're all legal?
Yes.
We're all legal and ready to go? Now, you can go. You held them up at the door. They got nervous.
All right. Once again, 10B, hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule for 2011, 2012, establishing fees for municipal services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Admin Soon Finance Director. The master fee schedule enables the city to recover costs incurred to provide special services requested by members of the community, thereby minimizing or eliminating the use of limited general fund revenues. It's the policy of the city council to generally seek full cost recovery, and a fee schedule that maximizes cost recovery through appropriate fees is an important component of the city's ongoing financial stability. Each department, each city department has reviewed its respective user fees to determine if adjustments are warranted for full recovery of its costs to provide the services for which the fee is charged. Several adjustments are recommended for the upcoming fiscal 2011, 12 year to take effect July 1, 2011. I'll briefly go over some of those adjustments. The details have been included in the staff report and the corresponding master fee schedule. Some of the fee adjustments include an update of the photocopy charges for the city clerk department and generally overall for the Public Records Act requests from 10 cents to 25 cents. In the library department, modification is recommended for the fee for damaged materials from $2 to $3. That's to standardize it with the Panitzler Library System. Also, an increase in the charges for reserving materials from 75 cents to $1, consistent with what was approved by the county. In the police department, there's a fee for arrests for DUI. That's proposed to be eliminated due to a recent court ruling that determined that recovering booking, booking fees and related costs for such offenses is unreasonable and deemed recommended for elimination unless specifically directed by the trial court at conviction. Also, in the police department, the hourly rate for uniformed officers is recommended for an increase from $7 to $80 for services to government, governmental customers, and for non, or other customers from $105 to $120 to reflect the actual costs of staffing and the overhead. And finally, in the public services department, recommendation is to increase the cost of street patch from $1 to $5 to reflect the higher costs of asphalt. And then also, a fee of $138 per hour is recommended for information for public infrastructure and easements related to private property, and that rate is consistent with the rate for the departments. And lastly, in terms of the public services department, staff is also working on revising the encroachment permit fee and the hauling permit fee, and that would come back to the city council at a future date. So, at this time, staff recommends the city council hold a public hearing, take public comments, and adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule for 2011, 12. I'm also available for questions on any of the proposed adjustments.
Any questions of staff at this time? All right. Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the public like to speak on this side? Remind you that when I close the public hearing, we close the public hearing. You're concluded from addressing the council on this item again.
Move to close the public hearing. Second?
Motion second, on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any discussion or action?
If there be no further discussion, I'll move to adopt the resolution amending master fee schedule for 2011, 2012.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Now, based on our discussion earlier, we're going to go right to item number 11, Report of Commissions, Boards, and Committees, since tonight we will receive the annual report from the Planning Commission.
Good evening. I have several slides. Thanks to Director Ackman. You now can see those slides. And this is the Planning Commission's report to council summary for 2010 and outlook for 2011. Before I get past this point, I'd like to say something that shouldn't be lost, that you have a very dedicated group of planning commissioners. All of them, thank you, all of them have quite a bit of tenure, and I think part of the reason they're dedicated and they're, they're so meticulous in their work is because the staff support is excellent. The reports are accurate, clear, and make it possible to make decisions without a million questions. Before you on the screen are the Planning Commission members, and I'm joined here by Mary Lou Johnson as well. Joe Samoud is vice chair, Rick Bisari, Suendra Mishwa, Bob Marshall, Kevin Chase, and council liaison, Councilman Ibarra. The significant projects, we recommended the council approval of the residential design guidelines, the housing element, Pacific Bay Vista's project, and the Glenview rebuild Under commercial and residential projects, we approved new recreation building and four new units at Crystal Springs Terrace. Similar level of activity was seen this year when compared to 2009 in the number of these applications, and we reviewed five Glenview rebuild projects. And if you, you've probably been by there, you can see a few of those are underway, and I'm told that quite a few others are in design. Goals for 2010: Continue to review applications for the Glenview rebuild, complete the zoning code update with sustainability component, complete the downtown and transit corridor plan, and potentially review new affordable housing developments. I guess that's depending on the economy. Residential review design guidelines. This was really a major document, and it goes a long way toward improving the projects that are submitted in the city and makes it easier at the same time for the applicants to know what's desired in terms of standards. So, it improves the quality and compatibility. Architects and homeowners have appreciated understanding the city's design expectations upfront instead of waiting for the review process, and this has assisted significantly in the Glenview expedited review process. Completing the zoning code update, the very next step is a joint Planning Commission and City Council review of the zoning code sustainability audit. Then, complete the zoning code update for consistency with the adopted general plan, transit quarters plan, and the residential design guidelines. On completing the transit quarters plan, the environmental impact report for the plan will be released soon for public review. The IR and the full plan to be reviewed in 2011, 2012, depending on replies to the comments. Other planning projects for 2011: Conduct special architectural review committee meetings to assist with timely review of Glenville, Glenview rebuild applications, and this process has worked well so far with five homes being approved at this review level. And I can tell you, the commissioners have all been anxious to expedite this process, and there's been no shortage of reviewers. Thank you very much. For the Planning Commission, as chair, I'd like to thank you for setting policy direction, and I look forward to more collaborative efforts. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Barry. Any questions of the chairman?
Just a comment to the chair. You've already alluded to this, but I wanted to echo it, that last year, when I was, the liaison for the commission came from some meeting at City Hall, we were having them weekly at that time, and had requested and asked from the council that the commission be willing to meet on a more regular basis for their architectural review, and that moment after I said those words, there were volunteers. And I want to compliment and commend all the commission for their willingness to step up and have additional meetings and assist in the rebuild of Glenview. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, and I'll pass it on to the commission.
Yes, Michael?
No comments.
And I just want to say, as I do with all boards, commissions, and committees, you guys are doing a great job. I had the pleasure of serving on the Planning Commission a number of years ago now, before I got on the city council, and it's, it's one of the commissions that you can actually get out, meet the people, touch and feel the neighborhoods, and it's exciting, but it is a lot of work, and we really appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to item nine, public comment on items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaised pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment? We ask that you state your name and your street address, please.
Good evening, Mayor Jim Wan and San Bruno City Council members. My name is Michelle, and I just graduated from Aragon High School, and I will be attending UCLA this fall.
My name is Freddie. I just graduated from Aragon High School.
My name's Aridian. I'm an incoming junior at Cappuccino High School.
We're members of Yomario, which stands for Youth Organizing San Mateo County, and is a program at the Youth Leadership Institute. Yomario is the countywide Friday night live youth coalition.
Today, we're going to tell you about one of our campaigns, Smoke Free Hollywood. First, I'll tell you about how the tobacco industry uses movies to target children and teens. Then, we're going to tell you about our campaign and the data we recently collected, and give you an opportunity to take action.
Tobacco companies replace the 400,000 smokers who died each year by recruiting new young smokers. Hollywood movies account for about half of those new smokers because tobacco companies have an 80-year-old history of using movies to promote smoking. The more smoking that children and teens watch on the screen, the more likely they are to start smoking as teenagers.
We are asking the Motion Picture Association of America to change their policy so that, one, GPG and PG-13 movies be tobacco-free. Two, movie producers would be required to certify that they did not accept money from the tobacco industry for putting tobacco in their movies. Three, strong anti-smoking ads should be shown before movies with smoking. And finally, that there should be no tobacco brand or logo identification in movies.
These four policy solutions have been endorsed by the World Health Organization, the American Medical Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and many others, including local elected officials such as Rebel City Council, Pacific City Council, Daly City Council, San Mateo City Council, Belmont City Council, and San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. This year, we forced our campaign efforts in San Bruno and Berlin game. And we recently conducted research in these two cities by recollecting through 230 public opinion surveys. We asked people their opinions on these four policy solutions. Here's what we found.
When we asked people whether they would support making GPG and PG-13 movies tobacco-free, 83.9% said yes. In addition, 69.6% said that they would support requiring movie producers to certify that they did not accept money from the tobacco industry for putting tobacco in their movies. 75.5% of people we surveyed said that they would also support showing strong anti-smoking ads before movies with smoking. And finally, 73.9% said that there should also be no tobacco brand or logo identification in movies.
We respectfully request you to pass a resolution in support of the campaign urged the Motion Picture Association of America to make these four policy changes to protect young people from targeted tobacco marketing.
Thank you for your time. We really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about this important issue.
Well, thank you for attending our meeting this evening. And we can't do much action here this evening because it's public comment. But if you do have some information or DVD, you're welcome to give it to the city clerk, and she'll see that it gets passed to the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, we'll move on to item 10, conduct of business. Item A, received an oral report on the progress of the San Bruno Caltrain grade separation project.
Before the construction started, before the construction began, JPB, Carol specifically asked me tonight to turn on the microphone. That's why I didn't realize that the mic is not on. Before the construction phase began, JPB and the Citi entered in a MOU and also in operation and maintenance agreement specifying and agreeing in detail what the responsibility of JPBs will be and what the responsibility and the role of the Citis will be during the construction of this very major project, with the construction will last two years. In essence, what these documents really reflect is that JPB, it is the responsible party for the implementation of the project, including quality control, public outreach, and proper communication with the Citi or the agency, and also proper communication and public outreach with our residents. The Citis' main responsibility includes the general oversight of the proper fulfillment of this obligation on JPB's part. In order for us to fulfill our obligation as part of this agreement, the Citi entered in a contract agreement with PB and Bruce Shushak is acting on our behalf and help us to fulfill that obligation. You approved that contract back in November of last year. This coordination and collaboration between JPB and the Citi so far on this project is very intense and very effective. They are ongoing daily, weekly field visits jointly between JPB and the Citi. Also, weekly and monthly coordinating meetings, including monthly coordinating meeting between JPB and all of the departments in the Citi. In addition, is weekly update, how any concern on JPB's part, how any concern was addressed and resolved, any concern raised by any resident or anybody in the Citi. And also, ongoing weekly updates are posted on the web and also communicated to our residents on the expected and upcoming construction activity on the project. I will let the project manager from JPB, Rafael Boulon, to give you an update on the construction, and all three of us will stand for questions.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna give you a brief update, and I'm gonna focus primarily on the next three months and the next six months, and a look ahead as to the impacts to the city. So, a quick overview, the project goals were primarily to enhance safety at three grade crossings. There's a number of other improvements for traffic in the city in general, but primarily a safety improvement project. To do this, as you know, we're gonna create, separate three crossings, San Bruno, San Mateo, and Angus Avenue, and include three pedestrian-only underpasses. Two contracts have been issued, or one has been issued and completed, and one is in process right now for this grade step. One was for the box culvert. It was awarded back in February 2010, and was completed in October 2010. And then the main contract, which was awarded in July 2010, and is ongoing. So I'm gonna go through some of the current construction activities right now. Mainly out there, what you see is a number of track activities, some civil improvements, some earthwork, et cetera, and a large number of utility improvements are ongoing. As to street closures, we had two weekend closures of Scott Street, and those are complete. We had two weekend closures of South Linden, and that's complete. And looking forward, we have a full closure of First Avenue at San Mateo at Melody. And that will be a permanent closure happening later this summer, as well as the cut over to the Shoe Fly, which I'll discuss later, but involves a major closure of all three intersections. So really quickly, some photos. Here you can see some of the track work going on here between Scott and Linden in this shot. Here is the shifting of the crossing at Scott at night, obviously. And here are some of the utility improvements that are going on. This is a new sewer line that's going in on First Avenue. And more of the track work, in particular, here you see welding, again, going on at night, obviously. And finally, some of the preparation that goes in for the Shoe Fly construction. So, the important thing to note from this slide is that the Shoe Fly will be closer to the east than the existing Caltrain tracks. So it will be closer to First Avenue and San Mateo than where you currently see the Caltrain in this slide. And then here is the, some of the new protection that was put in for the I-380 in the form of a crash wall, and some of the utility relocations. This is for, this is actually AT&amp;T. We're moving some fiber optic cables. And actually, in this slide, they're in fact lifting the fiber to get a sewer under it. So, upcoming construction activities, like I said, I'm gonna focus on a three-month window and then a six-month window. So, this is the San Bruno-San Mateo as you see it today. Lumber yard off on the left-hand corner, top of the slide would be the freeway. And in approximately three-month window, what you're gonna see is the construction of that Shoe Fly, which again is a temporary bypass for our tracks located immediately to the east. So you can see the existing Caltrain tracks, and you can see the beginning of the Caltrain Shoe Fly. So what's gonna happen in the next three months? The main activities are gonna be, you're gonna see the construction of the Shoe Fly, and that will be all the way from Scott Street, all the way down to the existing station. So quite a bit of construction there. You're gonna see some of the major utility relocations completed, the fiber optic, the AT&amp;T, some of the PG&E work. And then the temporary station will be constructed immediately to the south of the existing station during that timeframe, as well as there'll be a public outreach meeting. And unfortunately, I left June 29th on there. The tentative date is actually for July 13th. I apologize for that. So during the next three months, some of the impacts that residents may see would include, there's no more street closures in the next three months. So we're done at Scott and Linden. However, you continue to see lane closures in San Mateo and Huntington and San Bruno periodically. There will be some minor night work. This will be less than what you've previously experienced, because at this point, what we're doing is primarily testing, not major civil work like you saw previously. Air quality, we continue to monitor that and mitigate using watering to mitigate dust. And then parking, there'll be intermittent parking restrictions, primarily at Huntington and San Mateo, but on other streets as well. And so, within a six-month horizon, what we'll see is the Shoe Fly will be completed. Caltrain will then be running on the tracks to the east, and we will have demoed out the existing crossings at all three crossings. So by the end of 2011, this is that six-month look ahead, we'll have cut over to the Shoe Fly. That'll take place sometime in early fall of this year. Immediately after that, pile driving activity will begin. So you'll see pile driving in San Bruno, San Mateo, and Angus, all happening one after another. And then the removal of the existing tracks and excavation for grade separation. And it's important to note, because when we start excavating, there will be an increase, a marked increase in the amount of trucking going through there due to all the off-haul. And we will begin construction of the bridges in San Bruno, San Mateo, and Angus. So you won't see the bridges themselves, but you'll see the abutments, et cetera, going in. So again, some of the impacts that can be expected during this six-month timeframe would be the closure that I spoke about, which is a one-week phased closure. So we will have Friday night through early Saturday morning, all three crossings, San Bruno, San Mateo, and Angus will be closed. The first to open will be San Bruno, which will be open that morning, that Saturday morning, for emergency traffic, followed by later that day for regular traffic. San Mateo is the next crossing to open. That opens Monday early at 0500. And then Angus will remain closed for a week. So this is obviously a major closure. We'll notify well in advance of that, but that's the next and the last big major street closure. Also, from a noise point of view, I mentioned pile driving. The pile driving has to occur during the day for obvious reasons, and so that will be an impact that those in the area will notice, no doubt. Air quality, we'll continue to monitor that. We'll continue to water to keep dust particles down. And parking, of course, we'll continue with intermittent parking restrictions in that area as the case may be. So just jumping ahead really quickly to the rest of the project. Now, with the Shoe Fly, you see the beginning of the MSC wall construction. And in the lower left-hand corner of the screen, you see the beginning of the pedestrian underpass. And what you see in the middle of the screen is actually the bypass for San Bruno. Because San Bruno doesn't move from its current location, we have this cowboy hat or donut, whatever you want to call it, bypass involved. And here further, you see continuing work building the abutments, final street alignments, lowering of the streets, bridges under construction, part of the station completed, Posey Park up on the top right-hand corner, and then the final station alignment with the transit center and all the improvements in place. So some of the community outreach efforts that Clara mentioned. So, we've held community meetings. We had a project kickoff event to kind of shepherd in the project. We have weekly construction updates that go to city staff. We have weekly constituent contact reports where we report on all concerns that the community may have and what measures we're taking to address those. And we also mail and email out construction notices for various phases of the work, and I'll show you an example of one. So this is, just gives you an idea of the number of complaints and the number of resolved complaints. And I should mention that in addition, the city themselves have received seven complaints, and all seven have been resolved by city staff. You can see in just gross numbers that there does seem to be a trailing off. At least initially, there was a lot more questions. People were more curious than anything. As work has continued to progress, those numbers have decreased. And here's an example of some of the construction notices that you may have seen mailed out to the community. We do it in English and Spanish. And what we do is we target that towards both the specific area that is gonna be most affected, as well as we try to time that, so we're not too far in advance. We find if we tell people 12 months in advance, people just file it in the garbage can. But if we don't, you know, we tell them a day before, it's too late. So we try to give them a decent window to find alternate routes if necessary. And again, the community outreach meeting that is taking place, and again, I apologize for the previous slide, will actually be tentatively scheduled for July 13th. It'll be held at Belair School, as the previous ones were. We will send out a mailer, as well as, when we have a hard date for that, we'll post it on the city website, so everybody has access to that. During that community outreach, we'll provide updates, similar to what you just saw, with specific dates and with specific impacts to the community. We'll discuss upcoming impacts and how they affect the community, and answer any questions that anyone might have. And just in closing, here's a view that you may remember from the previous presentation, but here's a final shot of Posey Park from San Mateo, just so you know what we're all building out there. Any questions?
Any questions?
The chair, just if you could, just give us a quick update very quickly on any, what areas of concern or complaints did you receive from residents?
So the main concern, well, initially, there were mostly questions about timing. We received a number of questions about that. We received a number of questions regarding utilities in particular. There were residents who were concerned in particular about drainage, and they had some pretty specific questions regarding that. Most of our concerns are resolving around night work. Obviously, people who are impacted during these weekend windows where we do have to do night work. And those, I think, have been the most recent ones we've got.
Okay, and then just, obviously, in the course of the work, if there is graffiti that comes up on various areas that you're working at or that you're responsible for, those are being taken care of in a timely fashion with, within our municipal code?
That's correct.
And then also, I know in the, where the San Bruno lumber was, sometimes there's mounds of earth or whatever you have there. I've had some comments that at times, obviously, there is a little bit of wind down there at times. And so, obviously, some of that is going on to vehicles. It depends what's there. Is that going to be covered correctly or at least secured better so that we don't have that when the heavy wind comes through that goes on to parked vehicles or those that are passing by?
So this is dirt actually coming onto vehicles traveling on San Bruno or San Mateo adjacent to the?
San Mateo Avenue?
Yeah, I will definitely talk with Granite Construction, the contractor out there, and make sure they better secure those. I mean, those stockpiles are obviously there temporarily until they can get those tested and moved out. But obviously, yeah, we can protect those better with, there's various wraps and plastics you can put on them to secure that, so we will do so.
Thank you.
Have you run into any unknowns?
We have. I mean, it's a major construction contract, so obviously, yeah, I mean, there's, there are always issues with undergrounds. A lot of the utilities weren't where we thought they were, and just general underground has always been a challenge, and it continues to be on this one as well. Not an unknown, but as you know, we experienced a much heavier-than-usual rain this year, and that was also a major impact to the project.
But so far, you're pretty much on schedule?
We are behind schedule. We lost approximately two months due to some heavy rain and to a couple of other activities that didn't go as quickly as we'd hoped. We are still projecting the same completion date. We are still projecting the same completion date, and we're attempting to catch up. So when I say two months, what I mean is two months on our internal milestone to cut in CP Scott. We're still on track at this time to meet the final completion, which is obviously everybody's goal. So in order to do that, we're going to have to expedite some work carried through.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, we've been working on this with you for a number of years, so we're really looking forward to cutting a ribbon down there.
Yeah.
So, and I know you are too.
We'll get another train cake out for the...
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Item 10B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with BKF engineers for a not-to-exceed amount of $298,516 to provide engineering design services for the Glenview Neighborhood Reconstruction Project.
As a result of the last September tragedy, the Glenview Neighborhood was impacted in an unimaginable way with loss and impact on life, private property, and public property. All publicly-owned properties sustained different degree of damage or were destroyed. The neighborhood already started to rebuild itself, and in order to facilitate that process, it is critical to rebuild simultaneously the damaged infrastructure in the area. To make this to happen, in March, the department issued on one request for proposal to support the city and the community in the development of design alternative and development of the reconstruction. To our request to proposal, our request for proposal was sent to 29 consultant firms. Three of, the city received three proposals. Two of those consultants were interviewed, and BKF was recommended as the best consultant to help us at this time for the design of this project. Very briefly in summary, I will try to take you through what the scope of this project will be. In essence, to rebuild the Glenview Neighborhood using best practices available for a long-term viable neighborhood with a strong sense of community. We'll be our intent to develop how I said, design alternatives. And as the design will be in progress, the alternatives will be developed, more information will be developed, and will be a specific decision point when the city will need to make a specific decision to further proceed based on chosen alternatives. The biggest alternative will be to make a policy choice and a policy decision to rebuild the infrastructure only just in the direct impact area of the neighborhood, or to rebuild the infrastructure and to update the infrastructure through, for the whole impacted neighborhood. I will take you through each of those infrastructure which were damaged. The streets, it is a minimum requirement before any, before traffic that whole neighborhood can be open for pedestrian and vehicular traffic. The city will need to have some spot repairs on the pavement and also on the sidewalk. And before opening to, to the public, also, the city will need to install some guardrail alongside the canyon. Also, the city will need to consider additional alternative to replace the pavement and the sidewalk throughout the direct impact area, which basically would be the prior fenced area where most of the homes were destroyed. Or considering the overall impact of the construction activity and throughout the whole neighborhood to assess and to improve the streets and the sidewalk with however will be needed based on specific condition assessment of the pavement and the sidewalk throughout that whole neighborhood. The same approach would apply for street light, for street lighting. For, the lighting is not anything, is no minimum requirement that assume that the streetlights are in the condition that the area can support public activity. Other alternatives will be to install energy-efficient lighting wherever is possible, or one other additional alternative will be to consider to replace wherever is necessary, the whole lighting, street lighting system to serious circuits in the whole neighborhood. For water, it is a minimum requirement to install one-inch service for each newly rebuilt home. Under additional design alternative, will be important for us to reassess the long-term capacity need for that whole neighborhood and to rebuild the water system supporting that neighborhood. For the sewer infrastructure, is one section of our sewer main need to be, need to be improved before any construction will start in that neighborhood. That section is go on a easement between two properties. And also for sewer replacement, then will be two possible alternatives. One, rebuilding the sewer system only just throughout that direct impact area, or to, or to replace the sewer system throughout that whole neighborhood. The same approach would apply for storm drain system. PG&E will need to rebuild the whole distribution system in the direct impact area. They already have pretty much designed on, and is their intent to start the construction this summer. Another long-term alternative assessment needs to happen for, for electrical services. The issue came up, F would make sense, or the city would consider undergrounding the existing aerial electrical service lines. That would then will result in the same approach for the cable and AT&amp;T lines. The park will, how the park will be rebuilt in that neighborhood will be based on additional discussion and public input with residents in the area. And also will depend on the final available space based on the design of the infrastructures in the area. There are, beside the reconstruction of the infrastructure itself, there are many other ongoing and outstanding issue like how and fan the crater will be filled, replanting the slopes on the Crest, of Crestmore Canyon, how the site management will be addressed, and also minor issues, but important ones in the same time, how the mailboxes will be replaced. On the critical path, there are certain items like the reconstruction, the distribution, the distribution system reconstruction for PG&E. And on short term, in order for us to open that whole neighborhood for pedestrian and vehicular traffic, is important to make that site safe for walking and driving. Next step would be if you would support our recommendation tonight to award the contract to BKF for a contract amount of $298,516. Continue to work on policy items and issues as design develops to include the neighborhood in our design alternative discussion. And would be our intent to go out for the first construction contract sometime in August or September. It is also our intent to come back with another recommendation in probably next meeting or the meeting after, to make a recommendation how to manage the project internally. Probably one other contract will be necessary for us to properly manage this very complex and very time-sensitive project. If you have any question.
Any questions of staff?
Through the chair, real quick. I know you mentioned energy-efficient lights, and I know this is, we're in the initial stage, but I always get a little nervous because sometimes efficiency also, to me, isn't as bright of a light that I think sometimes neighborhoods like to see. So that's just, just a concern, but I know we're in the initial stage. Can you, real briefly, what other projects have BKF done in the area or that are noted for your strong recommendation for them as a, for this project?
I, I cannot really comment on. I will follow up with additional information exactly on what project BKF worked for us. I don't have right now that information for you.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair. Thank you. There were a number of items that we reviewed previously, that you gave us a list of a lot of these alternatives. And I'm looking at the, at the range of the proposals that were received, and I'm wondering if the fact that we have so many decision points that are yet undefined, if that's going to have an impact on, on the quality of a proposal? Because if we're asking somebody to bid on a job that has so many, so many variables and so many decision points, I mean, from my standpoint, I think I would have a difficult time trying to estimate what it's going to cost when I really don't know what I'm designing. And, and looking at this range, I mean, I think, and I don't know if that's the reason why there's so much variability there, but I'm wondering if that, that uncertainty is going to play a big role in, in what somebody's going to bid on this?
You are absolutely right. This is a very unique project in many ways, and in the proposed cost, you see the impact of uncertainty and also the time sensitivity of this project. That has to happen in a reasonable short, in a very short time, the first phase, even if probably will be not just one construction phase, but many follow-up, maybe different construction phases. But still, is, this project has to be on a very fast track and schedule, and also there are many uncertainties which will, the decisions will need to be made based on additional available information. And that's what you see reflected in the cost proposal. That would be my assumption also.
Right, right. And I think I would like to see the reconstruction happen as quickly as possible. And I'm wondering if maybe making some of these decisions upfront, some policy decisions upfront, might expedite the process rather than going down the process of designing many solutions and then trying to decide from those.
And that's why was separated, the possible alternative was minimum requirement, what really is necessary to make this to happen. But also what is, what is desirable and for the long-term quality of reconstruction of that whole neighborhood.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with the vice mayor. It seems that we're going to spend a lot of money giving us some alternatives and then have to make a decision based on that. I would sure like to see this neighborhood put back sooner than later based on, you know, complete reconstruction, if you will, and...
I, I received in meantime some additional help from the city manager, and I can help you with some of your question, council member. BKF designed domestic water project, which was, and I should, yes, I didn't remember, but was the most recent project for us. They designed domestic sewer and water replacement project. And also, they designed a big stone water project in San Antonio.
I could jump in here for, for a second. I, I think we clearly hear the city council's concern about spending effort to actually design solutions that might not be used. And I want to assure you that while we understand this to be a very complicated and in some respects, very unique project and situation that we're attempting to resolve, it is our intent to work closely both with a project manager. I think it's going to be necessary to allow us to efficiently move through the various alternative analysis and decision points as we work towards design of improvements that will ultimately be constructed. We're very mindful of the fact that the work effort really is one much more of engineering analysis and design capability to understand what might be the most efficient solution, how, what might be the alternatives, how should we move through at least a, enough technical information to understand what that means in terms of, of cost and logistics. It's not a, a project where we anticipate actual complete design of multiple different types of solutions. It's really one of identifying and embedding alternatives so that we have the opportunity to really make sure that we're doing this right and that we're doing it in the long-term best interest both of the neighborhood and the community as a whole.
Will the infrastructure committee be updated periodically?
Absolutely. It's, it's our intent. We have two different committees that would, and again, the city council as a whole may wish to participate either through study session procedures or other, in other venues. We have two standing committees of the city council that overlap pretty nicely with four members of the council that will allow us to address those issues in a very methodical way with the council's input.
Through the chair, and I appreciate the commentary of my colleagues. I know this is something that obviously, we've not gone down this path. It's unique to us up here and of course, what the staff is trying to deal with, so I appreciate and acknowledge that. But again, echoing a little bit of what the vice mayor said, whatever we can do to bring it forward, the scope of it, I think his, his words were, made a lot of sense. And maybe the subcommittee, as you indicated, might be a good avenue so that we keep this project on track and we try to obviously do what we can to minimize... project on track and we try to obviously do what we can to minimize costs and get the project completed so our residents can move back home.
Absolutely.
Any more discussion, action? We need a resolution.
I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with B K F engineers.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Item 10 C, receive a report and provide direction regarding the establishment of a planning committee to develop an event to commemorate the one-year anniversary of the Glenview Fire.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Since September 9th, the city has hosted many events related to the explosion and fire in the Glenview area. Some of these have been informational in nature, others have been social. But all have given the residents of the area a valuable opportunity to come together, share experiences, and reconnect with their neighbors and friends. The planning for the one-year commemorative events will be more extensive than the previous events due to our perceived interest in such an event. Several ideas have surfaced in recent months regarding the type and the scope of the event. Examples of these include a service at the site of the explosion, planting a memorial grove of trees, a walk either to or from the site to another location. If the timing works out, some have suggested a groundbreaking ceremony of the playground. There was also discussion about having two separate ceremonies, one for those that were directly impacted by the disaster and another for the broader community. Regardless of the final event selection, the highest priority needs to be placed on the sensitivity to the thoughts and needs of the residents impacted by the disaster. Staff recommends the formation of a planning committee comprised of one or two council members, interested residents from the Glenview area, and some members of the long-term recovery committee. We would appreciate your direction regarding the participation in the planning process of both the council and the community members.
Yeah, this is very important, and I know it's on the minds of a lot of the victims, the survivors, the residents in San Bruno as a whole, as well, as well as other communities. I would like to form that subcommittee now consisting of myself and Vice Mayor Salazar. So you have that already in place. And then we would like to outreach to the greater San Bruno community, especially the members that were affected most directly, to give a city clerk a call if they're interested in participating. And I think we've got to keep, as we did with the money distribution, keep it to a very, very small group, but we definitely want to, you know, be respectful of the sensitivities and the sentiments of, of the people in the Glenview area. So the people we pick hopefully will, will be good spokespeople and will work together to make this happen for us as a city and they as survivors. Any other comments?
I'll just, just my, I think the director made a comment about potentially two separate, one for the sensitivity of those affected in the neighborhood. I bet you if you ask them some up there, some of them might even prefer to have it private. I just don't believe that's possible. I think the press and the media will probably have some interest, but I don't, I've taken a poll up there, but I think, based on what I see in here, I think that would have more meaning. And maybe there could be a community thing later or the next day. I thought about St. Roberts only because that's where the community came together at its first town hall. But again, that may not be adequate for seating and arrangements, so maybe Skyline College is a possibility. Those are just some, some thoughts, if you may want to do a two-type program to address some of those things that you did.
Okay. We'll list those opportunities and wait for the subcommittee to get together with some of the residents, and we'll put something together that's going to be very nice. I know the community as a whole is, it's, it's a therapeutic thing for all of us. We need that, and we just met last Thursday evening. Well, we didn't organize it, but it was just a very quiet event on the nine, nine-month anniversary, and it was very nice, a moment of silence, very respectful, and, and, you know, people need that. So unfortunately, it's going to happen more than once. It's going to be something that we're going to have to relive over and over again. It's going to, you know, numb us a little bit each time, but it's, little by little, going to fill, fill the hole in all of our hearts. Do you need any more direction?
We will set up a meeting.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 10 D, authorize fireworks stand permit for 2011 upon finding that the nonprofit organizations meet requirements of Resolution 2008-59 at ordinance number 1700. City clerk?
Mayor and council, this year I received seventeen applications. One is a brand-new one and sixteen are returning. All of the applications were reviewed by the fire department, the police department, and the subcommittee. And then they also attended, those seventeen applicants attended a mandatory safety meeting that we held last Tuesday evening. In response to citizen, citizen concerns over the dangers of fireworks, as a city, we passed in 2005 an initiative that safe and sane can be done in San Bruno. So we cannot ban those fireworks. And I'm here tonight to ask that these, these applications be authorized.
Thank you. And just on top of that, I would like to ask the city manager to update us on special precautions we're taking in the Glenview area this year.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As you know, the city takes a zero-tolerance approach to the enforcement both of illegal fireworks regulations that are implemented at the state level and those local regulations related to the use and sale of safe and sane fireworks that have been implemented by local ordinance, as the city clerk indicated, established by vote of the voters of the city of San Bruno. For the coming year, in understanding and sensitivity to the concerns that are being expressed by members of the Glenview area and their heightened level of sensitivity both to the threat of fire as well as loud noises generally, we're going to do some additional enforcement, patrol, and monitoring and support to the neighborhood. San Bruno Police Department will deploy additional officers on July 4th and the days leading up to the holiday, as we always do. Those officers are assigned to focus, as I said, on enforcement of laws related to illegal fireworks use, and they are in addition to the normal deployment of officers on routine patrol. Supplementing those initiatives, we will be assigning additional officers directly to the Glenview area. In past years, around the Fourth of July holiday, we have typically assigned four to six officers who patrol in teams, the division of the city or the area of the city that's generally described as, as covering the area from I-280 to the city limits. In addition, this coming holiday season, the police department will assign a two-officer team devoted solely to the Glenview neighborhood. These officers, as I indicated before, will be in supplement to the normal heightened level of patrol we provide. Officers, as I indicated, take a zero-tolerance approach to the use of illegal fireworks or the improper use of safe and sane fireworks. A violation of either of these ordinances or either of these requirements carries a fine of up to $1,000. In previous years, fines have been imposed, and they will be again this year vigorously. In addition to this additional enforcement, in the Glenview area, officers will be there in advance of the holiday season to assist in reassuring residents of the neighborhood and to help remind residents of the neighborhood about the city's zero-tolerance approach and the actions that they can take to keep the neighborhood safe during this holiday season. I want to also address an additional issue having to do with fire safety that has been identified as a concern of the neighborhood and what we're doing about it. And that is the growth of tall grasses and weeds as a result of the hydroseeding that went on following the demolition of destroyed properties in the neighborhood. Those weeds have grown to a fairly substantial height. However, due to the weather patterns that we've been experiencing over this past several months where the weather has not been particularly dry or hot, those weeds have actually not matured to the point where they present an immediate fire danger. However, they are obviously unsightly, and they clearly need to be removed by and before the July 4th holiday season. The removal of those weeds too early has a potential of giving rise to a new growth that then will become an additional problem later down the road. So we're trying to time the effort to make sure that the area is cleared to make, to make best advantage of that work effort and to protect the neighborhood as best possible. As such, the city is coordinating with the private property owners in the neighborhood to facilitate the removal of the weeds prior to the start of the sale of safe and sane fireworks, which begins on June 28th. So that means within the next two weeks, we will be in the neighborhood assuring that those weeds are removed. We are currently in the process of gaining permission from property owners on whose property this work needs to occur, and we're about halfway through the return of those right-of-entry agreements that we previously sent out. So we'll be contacting property owners from whom we have not heard, and as a necessary last-ditch effort, it's my understanding that our fire chief and fire marshal can order removal of the weeds, and we would proceed on that basis if it becomes necessary. So we are doing what, what we believe is both necessary and what we are able to do in order to protect and reassure the neighborhood, and I would be happy to take any questions the city council might have.
Any questions of the city manager?
City clerk, will a motion suffice for this? I'll go ahead and move the authorized fireworks stand permits for 2011.
Took quite a second, a second.
Motion second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 10 E, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a third amendment to the agreement with Samatéo County for the provision of animal control services extending the term of the agreement through June 20th, 2015, amending the payment schedule to the county, and adding specific terms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. On June 20th of 2011, the most recent three-year term of the contract for animal control services that has actually entered between Samatéo County and the Peninsula Humane Society will expire. That necessitates the re-establishment of a contract for those services, and that's the reason that we're here to, with you tonight. The county and the nineteen cities besides San Bruno, the nineteen other cities in Samatéo County have determined that it is in our mutual interest to extend that contract for an additional three-year period through June of 2014. We reached that conclusion based on at least a preliminary review of alternatives, alternative service providers, and just simply an evaluation of the need, the, the services that must be performed and the best way to, to do those, to do that. This third amendment provides for a 3.5% increase to Peninsula Humane Society for the contract beginning in year two, and a 6% increase in the last year. There is no increase in the base contract amount for the first of this three-year renewal term. However, the city of San Bruno and others may experience an additional cost due to the, an amendment in the contract that is being proposed to you tonight that allows Peninsula Humane Society to become eligible for additional funding for approved repair and maintenance of the animal control building in Burlingame. And the amendment redistributes to P H S any unexpended funds at the end of the fiscal year. This amendment to the contract, in addition to changing the cost provisions, allows the county to recover actual costs of providing after-hours dispatch for the Peninsula Humane Society beginning in year two of the agreement. And it requires that all participants meet on a regular basis to monitor animal control services in the county and long-term alternatives to the animal control shelter. I would note that that is a, an enhancement of the contract provisions that have historically been in effect where a task force consisting of a representative of each of the cities, the county, and representatives from P H S has been in effect but has rarely met. The new contract or the amendment to the contract provides for a regular monthly meeting of this, of this group that is set up to review animal control service and operational issues. And it additionally establishes a new task force that will make, meet every four months or three times during the year to address alternatives and to, to consider alternatives related to the facility so that we can do a more comprehensive and thoughtful evaluation and preparation for continuation of services past this next three-year term extension in 2014. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Through the chair, real quick, I think I, I do like the concept of the meetings and a more regular basis to explore alternatives, if viable at all, obviously. I think if the city had to take ownership of this program, I don't know that we would have the resources, the staff, or the ability to do it at this cost. So for now, I think it meets that. Just a, a quick note, and you were very clear about the potential new charges that could take effect in July of 2012 in addition to the facility in Burlingame. How did, how was that paid for or taken care of in past, or was it not addressed in the prior contracts that you're aware of?
Well, it's, it's my understanding that the additional costs, which total approximately $9,000, or rather, $9,000 is the amount of increase that's represented in our budget that the city council will be considering next week. That amount was developed through different, smaller amounts that add up to $9,000, and they are various provisions of the contract that allow for P H S to receive funds for in, in situations where they haven't received it before, and allows for the county to recover costs associated with after-hours dispatch, as I mentioned. So there are a number of specific provisions in the contract that allow for costs that have, services that have been provided but have not been in the opinion of the service provider adequately compensated over the previous terms of the agreement.
And the formula that's derived for our costs, is that by user or the amount in which the city is requesting services from them? Or how is that derived?
I'd have to say that I don't have the details of that, but one of the provisions that drives that additional cost increase has to do with numbers of calls and if it's, if it exceeds the, the volume that is, that is calculated as, as, as the, as the cost that we, or the number of calls that we would normally be receiving, there could be an increased cost for the city. Typically, these types of joint agreements up in, throughout the county for a variety of different types, where we have these joint service agreements, typically the factors are population and the expect, the, the territory and potentially, in this case, I believe, historical experience with calls for service may be an issue. We do receive regular monthly reports from Peninsula Humane Society. Both the police department and my office receive those reports so we can see Both the Police Department and my office receive those reports so we can see what they're doing. And it does turn out that San Bruno has a relatively high utilization of the animal control services.
Thank you.
Questions, Michael?
No questions.
Okay.
Go ahead and introduce the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a third amendment to the agreement with the county of San Mateo Animal Control.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item 10F, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract change order with Technology Engineering and Construction, Inc., and appropriate $40,000 from the General Fund Reserve to the diesel storage tank replacement project for the remediation of contaminated soils and groundwater. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I'd like to begin my presentation by providing a little background information for the project. In 1999, the city removed an underground gasoline tank behind the Fire Station 51 next to the city hall. And it was during construction that it was discovered that the tank had leaked and contaminated the surrounding soil next to the tank. And since that day, the city has conducted long-term monitoring and sampling for the past 10 years to determine the extent of the contamination. It was not until earlier this year that the city was notified by the San Mateo County Health that the gasoline contamination has fallen to a level that is low enough that it is no longer a threat to public health and that the site is now considered clean. So given this history of high costs and extensive monitoring associated with underground storage tank contamination, the city proactively awarded a contract in October 2010 to Technology Engineering Construction, Inc., which will be referred to as TEC for the rest of this presentation, to remove the diesel tank that is also behind the Fire Station 51 and to replace it with an above-ground diesel tank. However, during the diesel tank removal this March, it was discovered that diesel fuel was present in the tank pit. And subsequently, city staff met with San Mateo County Health and TEC to determine what would be the best alternative for mitigation. And the first option is to backfill the pit as originally planned and to monitor the area for an extended period of time to ensure that the contamination dissipates. However, further cleanup action may still be required in the future. The recommended option is to further excavate the tank pit and to take fresh samples after the excavation. Staff expects that by removing the soil that is adjacent to the tank, that would, and eventually it would show an acceptable level of diesel concentration and allow the site to be backfilled with no further monitoring required. And this additional work can be awarded to TEC as the contract change order. The original contract with TEC was $153,000. The cost for the proposed change order is $38,000 and $38,014, which would bring the revised contract amount to $192,014. Staff is requesting an additional appropriation of $40,000 from the General Fund Reserve for this change order. Thank you, and I'm here to answer questions.
Good. Any questions regarding the tank replacement?
Do the Chair?
Just a couple of quick questions. One of them, I'm wondering, in the report it says the tank was recovered intact, yet there was some contamination. How did that happen?
I would hate to speculate, but during fueling of a vehicle, I mean, the fuel pumps that were of older, kind of antiquated now, they have the tendency to spill while you're removing the nozzle from the tank. And that could have caused spillage into the ground and in longer term resulted in contamination. And this could also be caused by the fueling of the diesel tank.
Okay. So the equipment that's in place now with the above-ground tank would be less likely to have that sort of accidental contamination?
Yes. All the fueling apparatus are up to date and the tank above ground that was installed is double-walled. The piping was double-walled, so the entire operation is, tank within a tank with spill containment implemented.
Okay. All right. And I think this recommendation is sound. It's probably better to get it out of the ground rather than wait and see if there's anything in there and give it time to spread around. I was wondering, though, what was the total cost of the 10 years' worth of monitoring on the previous tank? Ballpark.
I will have to research that information and get back to council, but it was a continuous monitoring every quarter, groundwater and soil sampling. And I can assure you that is way more than the $40,000 that we are asking for this change order.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
I don't have exactly the number, but this was more than $100,000 cost.
There be no further question or comment. I'll move to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract change order with TEC.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item G has been removed from the agenda this evening. Report of commissions, boards, and committees, we had that a little earlier. Comments from councilmembers? Any comments? Okay. Item 13, we have three closed sessions. The first one is conferred with legal counsel regarding Baykeeper versus City of San Bruno, United States District Court, civil case number 00753 SC, California Government Code Section 54956.9A. Item 13B is the city manager and human resources director request a closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding direction for labor negotiations with the public safety mid-management bargaining units. Item 13C is conferred with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, one case, California Government Code Section 54954.9A. And we will adjourn this meeting until the next city council meeting, to be held here on June 28th, 2011.